As follows, notice of this hearing has been published. This board met this morning, reviewed all of the cases and visually inspected sites. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table in front of us. You're welcome to come down and pick one up. They're located just right here. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases are perceived by the planning board to be non-controversial, have already been heard, or been recommended for layover, and therefore will be read and voted on without the opportunity for your testimony. If you wish to testify, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. When each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. This case will then be heard in the order in which it appears, appears on the regular agenda after we go through the consent cases. When the case is heard, you will have the opportunity to come to the podium, state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the board will first hear from the applicant, and after the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please state your name, address, and who you are representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to ten minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information, and try not to repeat what has previously been said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please take time now to turn your cell phones off. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the city council for another public hearing and final disposition by the city council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the city council. Lastly, upon the advice of the law department, all communications to the board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the planning department so that they are made a part of the public record. The department will then transmit all that information to the board as well as to the rest of the public. Rezoning matters are an exception to this rule. We're going to get started with the consent agenda cases, but first, probably against her better wishes, I'm just going to say, and we'll just limit it, Sherri Rockwell has been here for 27 years with the city of Omaha, working in the planning department. Before that, she was with council bluffs, and just want to say thank you, Sherri, for all the work that you've done while I've been on this board. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll get started with our consent agenda. Agenda item number three, case C-10-17-184, C-12-17-185. Applicant, RL Development LLC. It is on consent for approval. The request is a preliminary plat approval of Plaza 133, a subdivision outside the city limits with a waiver of Section 53-8, 4D, lot frontage along with rezoning from GI, GC, MH, and DR to GI and DR, and approval of a IG industrial gateway overlay district. Portions of the property are located within a floodway overlay district and a flood fringe overlay district. This was laid over from our September 6 meeting. Location is north of 101st Street and Blair High Road. Does anybody wish to have this removed from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item number seven, KC-12-17-268. The applicant is Matt Dinsdale. It is on consent for approval. Request is a preliminary and final plat approval of Edgewater Second Edition, a minor plat outside the city limits. The location is northwest of 226th Plaza Circle and Edgewater Road. Does anybody wish to remove this from the consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item number eight, case C-10-17-269, C-12-17-270. Applicant is Brenhaven at Hanover Falls Town Home Association. This is on consent for approval. The request is preliminary and final plat approval of Brenhaven at Hanover Falls, replat 3, a minor plat outside the city limits with rezoning from DR and R6 to DR and R6. Location is 8485 North HWS Cleveland Boulevard. Does anybody wish to see this removed from consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, move on to case 10, sorry, agenda item 10. It is case C-10-17-259, Ole's Big Note LLC, Nancy Mammel. It is on for approval of the consent agenda. Request is rezoning from GI to NBD. Location, 1314 Pierce Street. Does anybody wish to have this removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, move on to agenda item number 11, KC-10-17-260. Applicant is Ole's Big Note LLC, Nancy Mammel. It's on consent for approval. Request is rezoning from GI to NBD, along with approval of a MCC major commercial corridor overlay district. Location is 6152 Military Ave. Does anybody wish to see this case removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item number 12, KC-10-17-261. Applicant is Trent Overoo. It's on consent for approval. Request is rezoning from GC to CC, along with approval of a MCC major commercial corridor overlay district. Location is 500 and 5020 L Street. Does anybody want this removed from consent? You want this removed? Okay. It will be removed, and it will be heard in its normal order on the agenda. Move on to agenda item number 14, KC-10-03-203. Applicant is Lockwood Development. It is on consent for layover. The request is approval of a major amendment to the mixed-use district development agreement for Blondo 108 Business Park. Location is northwest of 108th and Blondo Streets. Does anybody wish to have this removed from consent? Seeing none, move on to agenda item 15, which is KC-8-17-271. Applicant is Rick Bergholz. It's on consent for approval. The request is approval of a special use permit to allow daycare services general in a R4 district. Property is located in an MCC overlay district. The location is northeast of 178th Street and Popleton Ave. Does anyone wish to see this case removed? The final case is 16, case C-14-17-263. Applicant, planning board. It is on consent for approval. Request, vacation of a portion of Jones Street right-of-way from the west right-of-way line of 38th Avenue to the west right-of-way line of the previously vacated 40th Street, containing about 6,864 square feet. Does anybody wish to see this removed? Seeing none, those are the consent cases. I will entertain a motion from the board.
I move for approval of items 3, 7, 8, 10, 11, 15, and 16 in the consent agenda, subject to any conditions in the department's recommendation report.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Flott, will you record the vote?
Megan?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved.
Okay, we'll take a motion for consent cases for layover.
I make a motion to layover case number 14 according to the recommendations of the department.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Flott, will you record the vote?
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Laid over.
Okay, we are done with the consent cases. If you had a case on consent, it is over with. You can stay if you wish, or you're free to leave, but that case has been decided and is done for this meeting. We'll move on to our first case. It's an administrative case only, meaning there will be no opportunity for a public hearing. It is case C-12-17-139, TD2. Request is a final plat approval of sanctuary acres, a minor plat outside the city limits. The location is 11205 North 60th Street. May we hear from the city law department, I mean, city planning department? Ms. Rockwell.
The planning department recommends approval of the final plat, subject to the conditions of preliminary plat approval, and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement if necessary prior to forwarding the request to city council.
Are there any questions or comments from the board? If not, is there a motion?
I move for approval of the final plat, subject to the conditions of preliminary plat approval and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement if necessary prior to forwarding to city council.
Now, a second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Flott, will you record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved.
Okay, we'll move on to agenda item number two, case C-10-17-215, C-12-17-216. Applicant is E&amp;A Consulting Group, Inc. Request, preliminary plat approval of Copper Creek, a subdivision outside the city limits with rezoning from AG to DR and R5. This was laid over from our October 4 meeting. The location is southeast of 168th Street and Military Road. We will now hear from the applicant. Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Kyle Hazy with E&amp;A Consulting Group, representing the developer. The address is 10909 Mill Valley Road in Omaha. As you stated, the property is located on the southwest corner of 168th and Military. It is currently zoned ag. It is surrounded on all four sides with the ag zoning as well. There is proposed future residential to the south, currently in the plating stages, I believe. We are requesting the rezoning of R5 for the single-family lots and DR for the outlots, which would include open space and our area for water quality basins. This project will support 293 single-family homes, along with preserving the existing open space. And as you can see through this site plan here, or through the existing aerial, we will also be including trails along those open spaces as an amenity for this development. We have received the planning board's comments. We have agreed to those comments. We have also resubmitted our plans based on those comments from the planning board. However, I don't believe they have received those in time enough to be considered on those comments for today's planning board mission. This is the plat, as shown, as laid out for the site. Besides the single family, we also do have Rachel Snowden Parkway shown on the plan, connecting to the north and to the south, which is one of the main comments, and I believe the reason for layover at the last planning board meeting. I look for any comments that you, or questions that you might have.
Okay, we'll hear from any other proponents. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Okay, I will close the public hearing. Does the board have any questions or comments? Or a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Need to hear from city planning. Ms. Rockwell.
The planning department recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to DR and R5, and approval of the preliminary plat, subject to the 26 conditions listed, being addressed prior to or with submittal of a final plat.
I move approval of the preliminary plat of Copper Creek, a subdivision outside the city limits with rezoning from AG to DR and R5, subject to the 26 recommendations from the city planning department.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Flott, will you record the vote?
Tate?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to agenda item number four, which is case C-11-17-239. Applicant is NP Dodge Building Company. Request, approval of a PUD planned unit development overlay district, formerly a PUR. This was laid over from our November 1 meeting. Location is 9300 Arbor Street. And Trenton did too. We have two board members, Trenton Magid and Chris Karns, have recused themselves. Rick, before you begin, I would ask you that if you would center your comments on the PUD, the flood fringe and floodway and the engineering and everything, preliminary plat, that was talked about last month, and that's the first step in the procedure. Today's step is about the PUD, and if you focus in on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we'll hear from the applicant.
Yes, my name is Richard Anderson, Rick Anderson, with the law firm in Croker-Huck, 2120 South 72nd Street. We're here representing the applicant. The applicant is represented by Nate Dodge. The applicant is NP Dodge 2 LLC, and its parent company is NP Dodge Building Company. The design professionals who are here for any pertinent issues are Stan Howe with ASD, Stan J. Howe Architects, and Joe Zadina with Lampard Airson Engineers. They are responsible for the design content and the site plan organization of this. As you stated, we're here on a simple and a fairly restricted item, which is a layover from the planning department of the overlay district, the PUD, PUR, overlay district at the time, with respect to the design criteria. At that time, we had a public hearing on the PUD, PUR, and at that time, there was one item that was really left open, and that was the design, which was laid over so that we could meet with the planning department. The meeting with the planning department with respect to the design criteria happened two days after that meeting, the November meeting, November 1 meeting. That meeting with the planners happened on November 3, at which time we discussed the various design criteria and issues, and at that time, we determined that the project details that had been presented with the original application and with the PUR at that time would remain the same, but that we would be moving to the PUD overlay district because the PUR had design criteria that were really more attuned to the inner parts of the city, probably east of 72nd, maybe even east of 60th Street. So we, within several days, we updated our application. The application is substantial, essentially the same application. All of the design criteria remain the same, and the sole reason we are here today is to look at the design criteria, I think, with respect to that, all of which have been presented to this board and to the planning department before this. With that in mind, the planning department has recommended approval of the PUD overlay for the R6 zoning. The R6 zoning, if you remember, and I can turn this so you can see it, but understand, it's fine, it's fine. Understand that north is to the left. North is moving in that direction. If you'd like me to switch it, I can. The PUD has to do with Lot 38, which is the area where the low-density multifamily housing will occur, along with Outlet C, which is the area in, kind of nestled in the middle of Lot 38, and that is where the stormwater detention basin will be. And then, of course, it's Outlet D with respect to the open space and the amenities which will remain open. The design criteria, as we say, have not changed significant, have not changed at The buildings will be as shown on the renderings, understanding with the PUD. This is the buildings from the 91st Street side. These are buildings from the southwest side near the creek. The buildings will be as shown on the application previously, where we will have in each building, it will have a height limitation that will be similar, the same as exactly, of the single-family housing in the area, 35 feet maximum, and it will be, it will house 35 units, 22 of which will be two-bedroom units, 10 of which will be one-bedroom, and three of which will be studio units.
Rick, I have a real quick question. Why have you got that rendering up here? So I'm looking at that rendering, and I'm seeing the garage units look like they are within the building itself. Is there going to be any outside garages?
There are no outside garages. No, there are outside parking stalls, but no outside garages. No freestanding garages.
All right, thank you.
That's right. The buildings will all be the same. They'll all have the same configuration. They'll be built with the same materials, and they will be properly as shown. With that, we don't know that we've had any concern with our decision, certainly not with the city of Omaha at this point, and we will reserve for any questions, if you have any, or for any response, if there is need for any.
Okay. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, we'll ask for the opponents. Let me remind you that we want to keep this on the PUD, and that, how many people are here to speak about this today? Could you raise your hands? Okay. For time, if you want to come forward now, and you can sit up front, just to shorten the amount of time that it takes. Okay, go ahead. Name and address, please.
Sure. I'm Sheila Carf. I live at 9213 Hickory Street. Good afternoon, Chairman Rosenbaum and members of the planning board. Thank you for allowing the Sunset Hills neighborhood, once again, to speak in opposition to NP Dodge's proposal to build 210 apartments and 37 homes on the current Sunset Valley Golf Course property, which lies in a dangerous flood plain. I mentioned my name and address. My husband, two young children, and I live at that address, which is one house away from 93rd Street, as I testified last time, the street that NP Dodge has proposed to extend into their proposed development. We have lived there for five years, and as I mentioned previously, I also lead our neighborhood watch group and am a co-head of our Sunset Hills Neighborhood Association, along with Don Geiger, who could not be with us today. I'd request that my full comments be entered into the public record, and I've submitted them ahead of time. Why are we here today? Originally, we thought that we'd just give a quick overview of what we talked about last time, but we have significant updates and significant information to share with you today, touching on things that you already mentioned. We also have other residents of our neighborhood, one that will speak later, who have not had the opportunity yet to speak because they could not attend the last meeting, so we want to give them time to make their voices heard. And after having read NP Dodge's application in full, at least the documents that we received from our last public records request prior to the November 1 hearing, and others tied to today's decision, it is clear that you should reject their final plat on the agenda for today. As of, I'm going to bring up--
Sheila, the final plat's not on the agenda for today.
Sorry, we urge you to oppose, that was my understanding. It's the PUD, is--
The PUD.
So we urge you to, sorry, to oppose the PUD that's on the agenda for today. Let me bring up this, please. So, as of 11:30 PM last night, 650 people, and counting, agree that this development should be rejected. Eighty-five percent of people, both in our neighborhood and outside of our neighborhood, as you can see here from this poll, oppose the current proposal. We'd ask that our petition be entered into the record, which we've also submitted ahead of time. Opposition will only grow as people outside our neighborhoods start to become more engaged and informed, which they already are. We already have heads of other neighborhood associations getting involved, signing our petition, and getting the word out. We have a few speakers today that will discuss and go into more depth about why the agenda item before you today, changes to the master plan, should be rejected. I will give an overview of our concerns on tax valuation myths, traffic and flooding concerns, the lack of transparency, conflicts of interest, and errors in NP Dodge's application. Rich Onkin will then discuss how the city is not allowed to approve developments comprising more than 25% of the flood fringe, and NP Dodge's current proposal is to develop 50%. Dr. Zedan will discuss reasons for not building on flood plains, and John Arnduffer will discuss the quantifiable benefits of protecting green space.
Sheila?
Yes, sir.
Please keep it to the PUD, if you would, please. We heard a lot of these arguments last month, and those arguments can move on to the city council. Today, in front of us, we have the PUD, so I really need you to concentrate and stay just on the PUD. That's what is in front of this board today.
Sure.
Okay? And the other arguments, you can, we're not stopping you, but those can be made to the city council.
Sure. We'll get there. I'm just trying to give a broad overview of kind of where we are. I understand that, sir. Thank you.
All right. Hurry up.
All right.
So, I'd like to, I think you already saw the folks that are here in opposition today, and I will then go into a few of those points, like you mentioned, that are part of the PUD. I'd like to mention, first of all, how many people in the audience understand what a PUD is?
PUD stands for Planned Unit Development. It's an overlay district that is approved, if approved, by the city council, requires the developer to construct the site plan and the building elevations, submit for permits in compliance with that approved ordinance.
I think we would all like to understand the difference between a PUD, a PUR. We can throw, I work with acronyms, we can throw all kinds of acronyms out, but none of us, none of the people along the golf course were informed about what is being changed, what is going from a PUR, a Planned Unit Redevelopment, as I understand it, to a PUD. None of that was made clear or transparent to people along the golf course that are required to receive the notification. For the average person, I mean, we have, some of us have been up literally all night long and spend hours and hours on this every single day, and we think we have our heads wrapped around it, but for the average person who's working today, they don't understand that. So I'll go into a few of our, of our.
Ms. Rockwell will address those questions that you have at the end of your testimony.
Sure, thank you.
Okay.
So that means I'd have to skip traffic, yes?
If you would, please.
Sure.
Stay on the PUD, please.
All right. So this development is inconsistent with several sections of Omaha's master plan. Don't take my word for it. The application says so itself, stating that since it does not fit certain parts of the master plan, steps are required to be taken to amend the master plan. Not only are reasons for amending the master plan insufficient, but the required development impact assessment completed to date also does not properly address the negative effects from this development, or how the applicant intends to mitigate those negative effects. Developments are required to be compatible with the surrounding area in density, scale, design, and use, according to your information. The Arbor Woods development is not compatible for several reasons, including, but not limited to, one, the apartments will not share the look and feel of our neighborhood, which Rich will discuss in more detail. The apartments are anywhere from six to seven times denser than the surrounding Sunset Hills homes, which we all live in. The R5 zoning allows for 14 units per acre, in my understanding, and R6 allows for approximately 20 units per acre. There's confusion about which is being proposed, since it seems the development is being sold as R5, when in reality, the application requests a change to R6 zoning. The planning department says that NP Dodge is under this limit by taking the neighboring green space into account in its calculation, but if you simply take the 210 apartments that are going to be built on nine acres and divide 210 by nine, you get 23, 23 units per acre, which is denser than even the R6 classification, meaning we are looking at more even leading into an R7 classification. I'm not an expert on planning regulations, but this is what we've had to do to try to get ourselves up to speed. Our current Sunset Hills neighborhood, which makes up 98% of the surrounding neighborhood, consists of R2 homes. So our lots are a quarter of an acre or a third of an acre, in the case of ours personally. This means that the apartments will be anywhere from six to seven times denser than the adjacent neighborhood. The development is being sold as low-density, when in reality exceeds low-density, moving into more so of the medium-density category. Either way, whether loopholes are used to arrive at numbers that sound better, this development is in no way consistent with our current neighborhood. The terminology for this is spot zoning. The only current zoning in our neighborhood, other than R2, is the school, which is now zoned as R4, so this is the Sunset Hills Elementary School. And the condos and townhomes near the commercial land closer to West Center are zoned R5 and R6. You can barely even see them on the map here, because, at the bottom of the map right here, where I'm moving the cursor, because they are so small. It is important to note that these are not apartments. They are condos and townhomes where people have more investment in the neighborhood. Their traffic also does not come through our Sunset Hills neighborhood as this development would do. They are also, these townhomes and condos are within one-fourth of a mile of West Center Road, as required for units of this type, and they do not exceed 100 units, both provided for in the master plan. This development, however, the Arbor Woods development, does not meet these criteria. When the Sunset Hills Elementary School zoning changed to R4, we were told hundreds of calls came into the planning department in the city, from neighborhood, from neighbors, questioning whether the townhomes, or whether townhomes and apartments could be built on the school's land. When I called the department personally earlier this year, I was told that they were only doing this so they could expand the size of the playground. So we said, okay, we won't fight this. A few neighbors still did fight it, because they knew what was going to happen. Now it's being used to sell, as you heard last time, this development, being close to R4, which is right here, kind of in the lighter green area, to say that there is a zoning requirement that, or a zoning classification around this development that is a bit higher than the R2, which is all of the rest of this yellow that you see, which is the predominant zoning classification in our neighborhood. So, as Rich Onkin testified last time, this zoning change to R4 is now being used to sell this development. Rich called it months ago, and our neighborhood is told one thing while something else happens behind our backs. I'll discuss other reasons why this process has not been transparent or accountable to the public. But first, NP Dodge's justifications for changing zoning are also unjustified. The application provides various reasons to attempt to justify a change in zoning, including the applicant, quote, "The applicant believes the existing DR and DRFF, which, my understanding, is Development Reserve and Development Reserve flood fringe zoning, for this property is no longer appropriate because, one, the existing use of the golf course is being terminated for financial reasons; two, the flood fringe designation of the property will be revised in a manner to allow further development of the property; three, the predominant neighboring use is for single-family and low-density multifamily residential usage; and four, the property is being underutilized, will become vacant and deteriorating, is obsolete in current condition, and is in need of redevelopment." So the key words there are vacant, deteriorating, and obsolete. I think you all have visited that site. You know that none of those three adjectives are proper to describe this property. So on number one, several families have tried to join the golf course. We can provide written evidence to you, people who tried with no luck to join the golf course over the past three years.
Sheila?
Yes, sir.
Could you please stay on to the PUD? The amendment to the master plan was made last month, and the rezoning was made last month. Please stay on the PUD, if you would.
Sure.
I'm not trying to shorten you, but if you could, because that's what we're here to talk about today. That's what's in front of the board.
Sure, thank you, sir.
All right.
So, my point is that the reasons used to try to justify closing the golf course for financial reasons are not true. The property being underutilized and obsolete, as you know, that is untrue as well. We have pictures and other things to show that. On transparency. Our neighbor, or, sorry, our mayor has touted the importance of transparency on her website. As the City of Omaha website stated on August 7th, 2017, "Open and transparent government is your right and responsibility." I agree. Transparency is one of the main keys to an informed and engaged citizenry. Our neighborhood association was not notified of this hearing. I know this is not directly related to the PUD, but I believe that we need, and I know it's not absolutely required by law, but I believe that we should be notified of this. And as I mentioned before.
You should be notified of what? What, what, what are you saying you weren't notified?
This hearing. So, I believe it states that we're supposed to be notified of the first hearing, maybe not the second. We can talk about that later, but I already mentioned this before, about this change between PUR and PUD. I'm not sure that any of us even completely understand why that happened. I think, I think we might, and Rich might talk about that. I just also want to mention the conflicts of interest, and one more error, and then I'll wrap up. One of the board members, Trenton Maggott, who works for NP Dodge, was promoting this development, Arbor Woods, on his radio show.
Sheila, he recused himself. He has not voted on this, so that's kind of irrelevant, whether, what he does in his private time on his private show is irrelevant. He's not sitting here today, and he wasn't sitting here last month. He has recused himself.
All right, we will follow up on that later. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
We've again found what we believe to be an error in NP Dodge's application. The PUR approval document stated October 25th states in a table that the adjacent zoning to the east of the proposed development is DR-FF flood fringe. However, elsewhere, in the application documents state that the zoning east of the development is R2, so not DR-FF, it is R2 instead, which are residential, single-family homes. So I'm going to wrap up. I know you don't want me to talk anymore, so, what is next? A lot of people think that you and policymakers don't care what we think. After all, our house is just a dumpy $200,000-some house, as my mom once told me. We aren't fair acres. We don't have, or we actually do have million-dollar homes within blocks of this development. And all of us, regarding of home price, make significant investments to our homes. Several people have lived there their whole lives and still continue to raise their children in these homes. We have 574 homes, and roughly two times the number of voters, not to mention other neighborhoods, as I mentioned, that are getting involved in this fight. We have at least two people that will be running for office soon, but no matter who we are or where we live, we have a right to make our voices heard and to understand what is being put before us today and being proposed. I don't think the average person understands that at all. So why are we here, and where are we going? We have an offer from a very generous donor here in Omaha to buy this property. We are very excited about this. We have been, we've had neighborhood meetings to try to define this vision and make sure that this property remains green space for flood protection and habitat, and to have a continuous green space along the Papio Trail. When you look at the map up and down, you see green space all over, and that's what it's intended to be. We're very excited that this person has come forward to make an investment in our, not only our neighborhood, but to make this a better place for everybody all across Omaha, children, veterans, opportunities for community gardens for veterans dealing with PTSD, for refugee families who have just come here and live in apartments and don't have access to community gardens, one of which my family and I are working with to help them acclimate to Omaha. Exciting opportunities for handicap-accessible playgrounds, a dog run, walking trails, wetlands, and all of these amenities that John will talk about later, that we desperately need in this part of Omaha, and I think we have, we should be very excited to pass this on to next generation. So thank you for your time, and we will have a few other people go into more detail on the agenda items specifically before you.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponent, I mean, opponents? And please state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Richard Onkin. I'm not sure how to pull up the other slides here, but escape or something? My name is Richard J. Onkin. I live at 1715 South 94th Street. Thank you, sir. I'm 302 feet away to the north of the proposed Planned Unit Development. I will try to keep my comments to the Planned Unit Development, sir.
Thank you.
My comments do stem from that because of the fact, I mean, Sheila can testify to that, I was not going to speak to the board this, today. I was going to stay silent, because I didn't think there was that much to be stated in addition, but I found, through research of looking at Planned Unit Development and understanding the Planned Unit Development and its implications, that there are a couple of things that the board should have aware, be aware of as we go into this. So it was brought up before, that development within a flood fringe 25% fill limitation was a concern with our group, and that's, that's a true statement. But what is different in a Planned Unit Development versus a Planned Unit Redevelopment that I'm bringing up in both letters that I provided to Mr. Fanzlow, Fanzlau, I think, sorry. You have a name like mine, I mean, Onkin, you know? Even though it's five letters, man, nobody can get it right. So, the, in that letter, I talked about how this is Development Reserve, and that you are changing it to a Planned Unit Development, which by 555-655L, in the planning, in the city municipal code, City of Omaha municipal code, cannot be done, basically. This is in my letter, and it's also, I'm sure, so this is, again, you know, the Development Reserve flood fringe is what we're talking about here, and then this is the, this is the code language. So, DR Development, again, we're talking about the development here, PUD, 55-104. DR Development Reserve District is intended to provide a transitional zone for orderly conversion of land from agriculture and rural to urban uses. The DR District coincides generally with undeveloped land, and so in 55, 655, we have it stated down here, "These provisions may be modified or waived in whole or in part by the planning director for redevelopment areas." Changing this to a Planned Unit Development makes it no longer redevelopment, and as such, the board and the planning department cannot waive the 25% requirement, and that's what my letter states. You know, I feel, you know, I don't feel across the board that the 25% infill requirement is, you know, a mandatory thing. I've placed in the record here, Bank of Nebraska, I'm sorry, First National Bank Building, near our homes, it's on 84th and Frederick. It exceeded the 25%. This is a previously developed area. It's totally understandable why that was done, but that's not this property. This property is very different. On NP Dodge's own website, this is what they show, which is, you know, emblematic of the Sunset Valley Golf Course, which is a previously undeveloped site, and as such, I don't believe the planning board and the planning department have license to waiver the 25% of fill in the flood fringe. Going on from that, the Planned Unit Development contains a requirement for architectural compatibility. Now, this is, again, something that changed from developmental reserve, or, I'm sorry, Planned Unit Development. When we went, when we went from Planned Unit Redevelopment, there were infill and redevelopment guidelines that had to be met. Now there's different guidelines that need to be met as a Planned Unit Development. So architectural design and building materials should be compatible with surrounding materials, and so the primary concern with this is architectural design. Now, you're probably expecting me to talk about the apartments, but I'm not going to talk about the apartments. I'm going to talk about the houses themselves, and the, and the single-family houses, and this, you know, it's, I don't disagree.
Today, we're talking about the apartments, that zone, not the houses.
But the houses are a part of the change to Planned Unit Development.
That's not what's in front of us today. That's not what is in front of us today.
I mean, these are architectural compatibility issues of this development, and I think the board has not looked at these things. You're basically approving what I'm showing here, and I'll go through this fairly quickly. These are, for all intents and purposes, the single-family homes are going to become row houses. Our, our area has very wide lots, 100-foot-wide lots, and 100-foot-deep lots. There are 50-foot-by-100-foot lots. This is producing the row development appearance that is shown on these images. So finally, since you don't want to hear about that, I'll talk about the.
Richard, it's not that we don't want to hear about it. That's not in front of us today, so we're trying to keep it to what is in front of us.
He is, concerns the apartment, part of the project, not the townhouses, as you're saying.
So the final item, again, where the, there's a violation of Table 55, 855, Public Facilities C, Stormwater Management, Criteria 3 violation. Okay? So, I'm. So I'm not sure, because I'm not an expert on this, whether this outlot is considered a part of the apartments and a part of the planned unit development or a part of the houses. But the fact of the matter is, is the plan for redeveloping this area is going to negatively impact the residents along the existing 91st Street. As you see here, there's a current path of drainage, which is a swell, brings water down away from these houses. These are existing houses up here. This new path of drainage that is in one of the outlots brings water directly onto these properties where water did not come from this, this land before. And so when we look at this on a, on a photo, this is the existing swell, and we have sheet flow flowing away from the existing homes. So what happens when we build this proposed road, which is a very steep road, it's 4.97% slope. I believe that road would be a part of the planned unit development. This road ends up being at approximately this height, 1,031.63 is the, is the height. Down here where the parking lot is, we're sitting at 1022. That flow from that road, you know, obviously the road is going to be curb and guttered and all that stuff, but the land adjacent to the road will both erode and flood into the adjacent homes. This is a basic principle that should have been caught in the planning department review of this area, and it was not caught, and it should be denied based on that because this is a very clear violation of that criteria. You're not supposed to impact adjacent land in this way with these planned unit developments, okay? This is new, this is a new project. This isn't like we're trying to squeeze in a little infill somewhere and we, oh, I'm sorry, we can't do it, so, you know, this is the only way to do it. This is new construction. You should not impact adjacent properties in this way. So I have two letters that went to the board this morning. I appreciate if those are entered into the public record. Thank you for the time to present to the board. I truly appreciate the opportunity as a citizen to state my concerns.
Thank you, Richard. Are there any other opponents?
I have...
You have to come forward and give your name and address, sir.
I'm being prepared to...
Sir, give your name and address.
Zahi Zaidan. I live on 1715 South 91st Avenue.
Okay.
I'm a Sunset Hills resident. And I just wasn't sure, I was trying to ask that question because mainly I was talking about, what I want to talk about is that building in a, in a flood area. I've done a kind of, the last few days, a lot of research about this topic, and I know it's not the, the title of the discussion today, but I think it's, it's, it's a big part of it, I think. So I wasn't sure if I'm allowed to talk about it.
And that discussion can still be had with the, with the city council, sir. It doesn't end here today. You can still have that discussion with the city council.
Okay. Am I allowed to speak or...
You're welcome to speak.
Okay. Because I think just some of the points that I, that I figured out is that when I heard about the development and, which is, I thought in the beginning, it's a great idea, you know, having, having, having something like this. But then when I knew it's in that flooding zone area or the flood fringe area, it just happened at the same time when I was hearing about Houston and then the flood area problems in Houston. And I just thought, it just doesn't make sense for the average person to build and expose this. So I looked a little bit more and I think I came to across a really good, good study by the administration of Flood Plan Management Task Force in the 1990s after the 1993 flood, flood that happened in Midway. And it really brings really a big, good points that we're discussing now. Some of the points is just not building in those areas and how it's more expensive actually to build on those areas in the long run for the city, for the state, and for the federal government. For everyone, it's just much more expensive to build in these areas. They have a very detailed study of like 250 pages document. And I think it's just, it's part of this we're talking right now, you know, whether it's a development or redevelopment. It's just we're not doing the ultimate good by building in a place where it's going to be high risk for the people who are going to live in it, or whether it's going to happen in a year, in two years, or 20 years, or 30 years. It's on the long term, and it was a really great study. It showed increase in the amount of price, that's the cost of this. And actually, they said, even if you go to the point where you build something and demolish it, you end up saving money in the long term rather than keeping it in the same place. So just my suggestion would be the possibility of not building it all from the beginning.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Any other opponents? Rick, would you care to come forward and address some of the concerns?
Yes. Excuse me, yes, Rick Anderson, 2120 South 72nd Street, Crocker Hickel. First, let me say, we'd be glad to make some comments on the concerns. We don't think the concerns have addressed the PUD and the design aspects of the PUD in particular, as we are standing here today. We think these design aspects have been before this board with a full public hearing last month. We had some design criteria, which has been...
Sir, sir.
We've had some...
Plur, sir. You can't say that.
We've had some discussion with the planning department, and now the planning department is recommending approval of the PUD, subject to, to, to requests, which is approval of certain waivers, which were, which are appropriate and which we're happy to do, and submittal of a revised site plan with respect to the sidewalks, which was brought up at the last recommendation report in the last public hearing, which we've said we will revise. With respect to Mr. Onkin's, did I say your name right, sir? Onkin, his comments? With respect to his comments, we're happy to meet with him and help him understand and address those comments. We don't think they go to the hearing today, but we certainly have concerns with respect to the flood plan and any other comments that are made here today, and we're glad to do that so that they understand it. We don't think it affects the conversation at this time or this motion. In fact, we're happy to meet with neighbors from time to time if they have further questions. But again, with respect to the comments that have been made here, we don't think any of them are addressing the PUD overlay district as it affects the R6 and the DR. It's an overlay of specific base districts. We don't affect the base districts other than to restrict certain things. And we think that at this time, this board should agree with the planning department's recommendation and make, and approve this request for a PUD overlay as per, provided in our earlier application and as updated. Thank you. Any questions we'll be happy to answer, and as I say, we have the design team, or at least principals of the design team here.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing. Does the board have any questions for the applicant or the opponents?
I'd like to hear what she's got to say.
Oh, well, you can, you certainly can call her up.
Sheila. Is, are you having, Sheila, do you have a question or, okay?
Richard, you need to restate your name and address.
Sure. Thank you, sir. My name is Rich Onkin, 1715 South 94th Street. So respectfully, sirs, the change from a planned unit development into a planned unit development from planned unit redevelopment is a fundamental change from the city municipal code. And while you say there's no change there, there is a change. It says it's only for redevelopments is where you can waive the 25% requirement. I know that we brought the 25% requirement up before, but no one here has stated that, you know, it's not a development now, you know, that it is redevelopment. Continue to state that it's a planned unit development. So respectfully, you're exceeding the authority within the city municipal code if you approve this. I sincerely hope you'll consider other alternatives to ask NP Dodge to relook at their issues, relook at the concerns that we have with the 25% fill limitation. The drainage onto adjacent properties, I believe, is still an extant issue, and it is appropriate to be bringing this up as a part of the planned development change. I was unaware and I apologize for not being aware of the differences of the exacts of this, but anyway, I just, I just genuinely think we're rushing this through. You know, I packed up my bag. I feel like, you know, we're on our way out the door in effect, but I really do feel like you're exceeding your authority based on the city municipal code. And I, I do appreciate your time again. Thank you, Mr. Rosenbaum.
You bet. If I might, you know, just for clarification purposes, I'd like to city planning board attorney or law to clarify municipal code and the concerns that Mr. Onkin has raised with regards to that so that we have a clearer indication as to whether or not...
Just give me a minute. Sorry, Mr. Pick, you wanted me to address...
Address Mr. Onkin's concerns with regards to whether or not we are complying with the city municipal code.
I mean, to be honest with you, I'm not sure I can answer that question. I don't have the full dimensions of the plan in front of me. That is something I think would be reviewed as part of the building permit process, Sherry?
Perhaps, Sherry.
When I ask the city's recommendations here, we'll address that.
So on, on last month's agenda, you had the proposed amendment to the master plan, which was recommended for approval. We had the preliminary plat, which was also recommended for approval, the rezoning plan, and at that time we had on the agenda the planned unit redevelopment plan, and I'll explain that later. The planning director has the authority to waive the 25% with regard to development. Now, what the applicant has begun to do is to prepare plans to submit with the flood plan development permit application, which will be reviewed by the planning department. Nobody's, nobody's waived the 25% at this point. We have information that we need to review to make that determination, and we will do that moving forward once that information has been submitted. The difference between...
I've closed the public hearing. Go ahead, Sherry.
Planned unit redevelopment and planned unit development, what that essentially does is tie the developer to a plan that's approved by ordinance of the city council. With a planned unit redevelopment, there's additional flexibility built into that that can be approved by the planning board and the city council. With a planned unit development, if there are items that are not co-compliant, those items are required to be approved by the zoning board of appeals prior to that plan moving forward to the city council. So there will be an additional step in this process regarding those things. Now, the preliminary plat and the future land use amendment is on its way to city council. There will be another public hearing, other notifications of that public hearing as soon as we know when that is. Aside from that, do you have any other questions?
No. No, I don't, thank you for, for answering that. I appreciate that very much.
I've closed the public hearing. Do you wish to bring...
If I, if I might, I'm going to interrupt you. I'd like to, I'd like to just say something. You made a comment, Sheila, that this board doesn't care about citizens' concerns. I haven't worked on that, I haven't worked on this board very long, but I can tell you this board does concern, is concerned with citizens' concerns. So I took a little bit of offense to that statement. This board is not, is not, is a representative of the public, but we're also very, very attuned of what the city planning department can do and does do, and they do a very thorough job of investigating their projects. The other thing is, you mentioned the fact that there, you had an investor that was willing to purchase this property. That is great. Where's that, where was that investor six months ago or a year ago when the, when the Sunset Valley Golf Course decide, or determined that they were under financial strain? Mr. Dod, not Dod, Mr. Dodge has invested quite a bit of time and money in this project, and for now to have somebody come forward and say, well, now we want to buy it out from, from Mr. Dodge, great, get with Mr. Dodge and see if you can cut a deal, okay? That's how that process would work. If he was interested, he should have made an offer to buy that property a year ago or tw, or six months ago. Because I asked that question last, last meeting, is what was the process used by the board or the golf course to determine who potential buyers might be for the property? And they opened it up. They said, they opened it up. Now, I wasn't there. I don't know if that's true or not. But I had to make that comment because the comment that you made was a little offensive, to be quite honest with you, to, to implicate this board in not being concerned with citizens' concerns. We, we do hear citizens' concern, and I'm glad you guys are here. Let me finish this. I'm glad you're here. That's part of the process. That doesn't necessarily mean that we have to agree with you. Not saying we won't, but it doesn't mean that we'd have to agree with you. The hearing's closed, I'm sorry.
Well, the, I closed the public hearing. Any board member can bring you up if they choose to.
I'll give you an opportunity to rebut.
Okay.
Thank you.
State your name and address, please.
Thank you. I'm Sheila Carf, 9213 Hickory Street. Board number paid, that was not my intention. I, I will go back and I've sent my comments. If that's how it came across in, in my reading, that's, that's not how I meant it to be.
I wrote, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you. I quote, end quote, "Board doesn't care."
Yeah, I, if I did not say previous to stating those words, that generally people have said to me, I work in the public policy world, and I feel like sometimes I'm the only person here who thinks that we can make a difference. And so I'm trying to rally the troops. I don't believe that. I don't want to have that on the record. I'm, I'm sorry, that's, I'll submit what I had written before. I'm sorry if it came across that way, my apologies. But a lot of people, some people in, in this room and maybe people who aren't in this room, come up to us and say, oh, this is just a rubber stamp process. You all have only denied two of 250 applications or agenda items over the past year or so. And, you know, they look to that and they say, why should I come? Why should I send a letter? Why should I pick up the phone? Why should I send an email? And I try to tell them, yes, we, you should come, you should make your voice heard. So I'm just saying that generally, that's people's thinking in, in why not to stand up, and we're trying to encourage people to stand up and make that voice heard. So that, that was not my intent, and I'm sorry if that's how it came across. I'll follow up, and I sent my, my testimony beforehand, and I'll try to clarify that there as well. But we, where was this buyer at that time? The, the golf course never opened this up for, for anybody. This, this was not open to anybody to put an offer on. And, and there have been conversations directly with NP Dodge on this potential purchase. On, on why we're here today, we would like clarification...
No, no, you answered the issue that I raised, thank you.
Just the subject that he asked, that's what you need to respond to.
Thank you.
I know I'm not...
Thank you.
Can one just...
Sheila, I closed the public hearing. If there's no other questions or comments from the board, we'll hear from Ms. Rockwell, the city.
Well, like they said at the beginning of the meeting, I've been here 27 years, and I've worked for all of the citizens of the community for that long. When we receive applications in the planning department for the planning board, zoning board, or one of many other boards that we've worked with, what we're tasked to do is make a recommendation based on adopted plans, not our adopted plans, plans that have been adopted by the city council. adopted by the city council, policies that have been adopted by the council, policies that have been adopted by the planning board, zoning ordinance regulations, a whole host of other things that we research in making a report. And along with that, we send out these requests to over 20 other agencies to receive additional input from those persons prior to these reports being finalized. Now, the public's part of this process is this. We're required to send out notices, and you're required to do your citizenship by attending these meetings, whether you're in favor or opposed. And that's how the system works. Like I've said, this case, the preliminary plat is moving forward to city council. The PUD does not actually move forward until a final plat goes to council. Now, before that happens, a final plat has to be submitted to the planning department for review. So, this is going to come back again. The final plat will be compared to a preliminary if it is approved by the city council for compliance, and then at that time, that will move forward. Now, this is not something that's going to happen in the next several days or several weeks. The applicant is currently starting the process of preparing final plans, applications for flood plan permit, so there will be a continual review of compliance for those plans with current adopted ordinances and policies by all the professionals that are tasked to do those reviews. With that, the planning department recommends approval of the PUD, subject to the two conditions listed being met in the request to the council for review.
Before asking for a motion, I'm going to just put my two cents in here. Dave Rosacher and I came from the city of Elkhorn area, and I was appointed to this board, and I decided to take a seat on the board, and I came in with a little bit of skepticism and a little bit of a hangover, a bad feeling of how the process took place. What I have found to my joy and to my amazement is how professional this planning department is. At times, I'll hear criticism around the city of, "Oh, the planning department's slow," or "The planning department does this, the planning department does that." I got to tell you, I've never come across a more professional group of people, and as Sherry said, their concerns are for the citizens of this city, and they try to stay as even keel as they can and apply the codes and zoning codes and the master plan evenly to everybody, every applicant, every person in this city. So, with that, I will entertain a motion.
I would move approval of a PUD planned unit development overlay district, formerly a PUR, subject to the two conditions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Flott, will you record the vote?
Rosacher?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Kerr?
Yes.
Approved.
We'll wait a minute for Trent Magid and Chris Carnes to come back in. We're going to take cases five, six, and nine together. I will read all three cases. We'll take six and nine together, and then we'll go back and take five from Bridget Hadley with the city of Omaha. Let me read agenda item number five. It is case C3-17-264. Applicant is planning department on behalf of the city of Omaha. Request is approval of the Saddle Creek 1011 TIF redevelopment project plan. The location is northeast of Saddle Creek Road and Pacific Street. Agenda item number six is case C10-17-266, C12-17-267. Applicant is Saddle Creek 1011 LLC. Request preliminary and final plat approval of Westside Replat 7, a minor plat inside the city limits with rezoning from R435, GC and GI to R8, along with approval of a MCC major commercial corridor overlay district. The location is northeast of Saddle Creek Road and Pacific Street. And agenda item number nine, case C11-17-265. Applicant, Saddle Creek 1011 LLC. Request approval of a PUR planned unit redevelopment overlay district. Location, northeast of Saddle Creek Road and Pacific Street. Like you said, we'll go with six and nine first, and then we'll back up to five. Larry, you're the applicant.
Yes, representing the applicant.
Representing the applicant, I should say.
Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. With me today is Christian and Deborah Christensen of Bluestone Development, who you're familiar with. The applicant is their entity, obviously, Saddle Creek 1011 LLC. Also with me today is Joe Zadina and Matt Cruz with Lampre Nielsen, who are the consulting engineers on this particular project. And also with me today is Todd Muller and Monica Erickson of Alley Pointer Mecado, the architects in this particular project. With respect to the recommendations, I understand we're doing the preliminary and final plat and the rezoning, the PUR first, and then we'll take the redevelopment plan after these other matters, so I'll get right into those first. So, I don't know if you can turn the overhead projector on, please. So, this is the project site. It is 2.643 acres, if you will, more or less, and this is Pacific Street on the south, of course, Saddle Creek running north and south along the western boundary of the property. It currently contains five lots, of which there are four single-family residential houses that are along Pacific Street, and then there is one which contains a warehouse in the middle here, and I've got some more aerial photographs and another picture of what is currently on the property. Obviously, the proposed project calls for the four houses and the existing warehouse to be demolished to make way for the proposed apartment project, which we'll get into in a little bit as far as what's being proposed there. As far as the zoning and the existing zoning, currently, what's outlined in black is the site zone. Zoom in a little bit so you can see the... So, you've got GC is the main part of the lot. There's also GI, and then there's three R4 lots as well. To the east, you have R435. To the north, you also have the GI zoning classification, and then, of course, to the west, you have CC and GI, and then to the south, you have the R435, the GI, and I believe there's more CC down here in this location. So, that's the general zoning for the surrounding area and what is currently being requested to be rezoned to R8 with respect to the area outlined in black. As far as the plat's concerned, the five lots that will be, or I'm sorry, the, yes, the five lots will be rezoned into one lot, so it'll be Lot 1, Westside Replat 7, and of course, it will be rezoned to R8 with the MCC or the major commercial corridor overlay district along Saddle Creek, and then also the PUR. This is another depiction of the aerial photograph that's maybe a little more clear. Again, the site being outlined in black showing the existing residential housing and the general industrial to the north, and of course, this being the project. This is a view of the warehouse that currently exists, so this is from Saddle Creek looking east, and so you can see there's quite a few trees on the backside of the property as well. So, we'll get to what's being proposed. This is the proposed site plan. Again, you have Pacific Street to the south, you've got Saddle Creek running north and south along the western boundary, you have the single-family residential housing development to the east and the south, which is the Morton Meadows neighborhood. We're looking to construct three buildings. The main building here, which is a five-story building that will contain 134 units, and then we have two three-story units along Pacific Street. They're more of a townhome-style building, if you will, and those each contain 24 units. I'm sorry, collectively, the two contain 24 units. There are 12 in each. The total number of units in all three buildings is 158 in total, and it's interesting to note that under the R8 zoning, you could actually have 229 units with respect to the acreage that's on this particular site. We're actually constructing, I think it's 71, units less than we could under the R8 zoning, which gets you about 31 percent less than what would otherwise be allowed in the R8 zoning, so we're not maximizing the site in that respect. We're building much less than what would otherwise be permitted or allowed under the R8 zoning. We do have a 30-foot buffer that we're meeting the requirement along the eastern boundary of the property running north and south. And as far as the unit mix, within the five-story building, we have 46 convertible units. There's 76 one-bedroom units, there's eight two-bedroom units, and there's four three-bedroom units within the main building. With respect to the two buildings containing the 24 units, each building has six efficiency on the first floor, and then they have six two-bedroom units on the second and third floors. All of the units in the townhome-style buildings that are along Pacific Street enter from the Pacific side, but all the parking is internal, and we'll get into the parking council here in a minute, but all of the parking will be internal to the site. Access to the front will be through a sidewalk between the two buildings, and so when I show you the elevations, you'll see all the front doors for these 24 units are on the Pacific Street side. The average monthly rent, this is a market rate rents, obviously, and it's about, I think the average is $1,100 a month, so it's a pretty significant average monthly rental rate for the units. As far as the amenities, the amenities are mostly contained in the larger building. Inside the building, there's a common lobby, there's a fitness room, here's what they're calling a chill zone with a fireplace and a coffee area and a conference room. The outside amenities are really, are on the Saddle Creek side, and there's a raised patio, there's a fire pit, and a grilling area. As far as parking, there are 170 total parking spaces within the site, and these are all off-street parking. There are 62 parking stalls that are internal inside the building, and then there are 108 surface parking, again, getting you to the total parking count of 170 parking spaces collectively, and that is a ratio of a little over one parking space per one unit on-site.
How many units, Larry? I'm sorry, how many units?
There's 158 units. And so, access to the property is solely off Saddle Creek, and there are three lanes as far as the entry point into the site. So, ingress and egress, there is a dedicated turn lane as you make right into the site, there's a dedicated left turn as you make your way south on Saddle Creek, and then there's a dedicated right turn, making your way north along Saddle Creek. The landscaping, getting back to that, you can see it exceeds the R8 requirements with respect to the amount of landscaping that is on all the various sides of the development. As far as the...
Larry?
Yes?
And the existing tree line that's up, separating the homes from the project, are those going to stay up, or are you talking about planting new trees that will take some time to mature?
I believe a little of both. We will be trying to maintain as many of the healthy trees as we possibly can, and then, of course, we'll be planting new trees as well. But, you saw from that picture, looking east, the tree line's pretty heavy, and if you look at the aerial photograph there, you can see that there's quite a few trees running along the eastern boundary of the property.
Thank you.
As far as the building elevations, the development team did meet quite a bit with the planning department staff and Jim Mole in particular, to come up with what we thought was a very good look for this particular area. This is a view from Saddle Creek looking east, and so this is the larger building, of course, showing the amenity space here, and then the overall look of the main building off Saddle Creek. This is interior view of the site. Of course, it shows the townhome-style buildings here on the left, and then the five-story building here in the middle of the site. As far as the townhome-style units, this is along Pacific Street, and of course, this is the west side. As you move to the east, you'll notice they step up in elevation, Saddle Creek being the low point, and then, of course, the eastern side of the property being the high point as it goes up. This is just another view. I think that's a nighttime view of the proposed site. So, as far as the materials, the five-story building is mostly brick masonry. There's some metal panels, and then there's some wood accents. You'll notice that five-story building has a flat roof, whereas the two rowhouse or townhome-style units have brick masonry on the first floor, fiber cement lap siding on the second and third floors, and then they have the gable roofs, so they're designed to be more residential in character as they're situated next to the houses immediately to the south along Pacific. They have asphalt shingles, and then there's a number of planter beds that are also extended along Pacific Street in front of those units. There are, in the PUR, we have about nine waivers. We can get in as much detail or as little as you want. I'm not sure you want to go through all nine of them right now, but we do have a recommendation from the planning department as far as the approval. I think the idea behind the PUR, of course, is the infill guidelines and trying to take these otherwise really difficult sites and have innovative design and fit them into an otherwise, next to impossible, you know, lot configuration, topography change, and then, of course, the existing regulations that you have when you start looking at these older platted lots and older areas of the city. So, I think we've done that as far as the innovative design, and we meet the infill guidelines, and I think you'll find that the nine waivers being requested meet the intent of the PUR code. And again, we can talk about any one of those in more detail if you would like. There was a traffic study that was prepared. Mr. Cruz is here to talk about that if you have any particular questions, but what it did show is there was adequate capacity on Saddle Creek to handle the number of units being called for here. Remember, all of the access is interior and off of Saddle Creek. There's nothing going through the neighborhood, whether it's Pacific Street or further to the east. All the traffic goes out on Saddle Creek. There was no material adverse impacts to Saddle Creek, and that's evidenced by the fact that the traffic study showed that there were no public improvements required for this development.
Larry?
Yes?
So, I did have a little bit of concern on the track, the ingress and egress coming out of there onto a fairly heavily-traveled street, and the impact that would have for residents coming in and out, particularly out of that complex. So, did the traffic study address that issue at all?
It did. It did, and it found that there was no public improvements being required. I know Ryan Haas is here, and he's reviewed the study, and he agrees with that. I know Ryan Haas is here, and he's reviewed the study, and he agrees with that. He can testify as to what the impacts are with respect to safety and actual impacts with respect to AM and PM peak counts, and also Matt Cruz is here with Lampard Nielsen. So they can get into those specific counts if you want. I have like a frog in my throat, and I don't know if it's like what it is, but I'm like, oh, my gosh. So I apologize about that. In any event, we had a neighborhood meeting. There's been a lot of communication with the adjacent Morton Meadows Neighborhood Association. We actually sent out 500-feet notices as opposed to 300-foot notices, and we also attended the, I don't know if it was their annual meeting, but it was a Morton Meadows meeting in which they, I think, told us at that meeting, it was the largest attendance that they've ever had, so there was over 100 people there for sure. We thought the project was well-received. I think when we talked about, you know, the existing zoning being GC and GI, and then going to R8, and it really being a down zoning, I think that that provided a lot of relief, you know, because if you look at the current zoning and what could be, you know, permitted as a matter of right in the GC, I think you have certainly a more intensive use that the zoning currently allows for. So with the PUR and the MCC, of course, you have the Urban Design Code that kicks in, which makes, you know, all the material requirements of the buildings and other issues that relate to their Urban Design Code apply to this particular development, except to the extent that some of them have minor waivers here and there with the PUR. But overall, the intent, I think, of the Urban Design Code has been complied with with this particular development. I've got a whole list of different correspondence at different times that Christian and Dever had with the residents within Morton Meadows. But again, I thought it was generally well-received. There was well over 100 people there, and the news media was there as well, and so we were pleased by the attendance. With that, we've been through the recommendation reports of the planning department, find them all acceptable, and we appreciate them, and we're here to answer any questions and respond to any opposition if you have...
I do have a question, Larry.
Sure.
I didn't realize this previously, but you mentioned that the access to the townhomes is from the Pacific Street side, but the parking is in the rear?
Correct.
So don't you anticipate that people will park on Pacific Street, then?
We did not designate any parking on Pacific Street, so I think it currently is allowed. That's not really our decision. I mean, it's the city's whether they want to post no parking. I think when we were at the neighborhood meeting, if I recall correctly, a lot of the people along Pacific Street were concerned about having no parking. I think they were used to parking on the street and didn't want that to occur. Obviously, there's limited parking in front of these units. If someone wanted to park there, I think they could now, but we're not using any off-street parking for our parking requirements, and we expect and anticipate that everyone will really be parking internally to the development and accessing the front doors through this particular sidewalk.
So there's no access to those units from the north side?
From the north side, I believe that there is not. I think that all the access is through the front, and that includes the second and third floors as well.
Thank you.
But again, there's only 24 units, 12 in each building.
I'm just thinking, as a female, what I would do. Coming home at night, I probably would park on the street in front of my house.
Any other proponents? Any other proponents for items six and nine?
My name is John Patrick Hillibrant. I have lived at 4205 Poppleton Avenue the past 17 years. My family and I are members of the Morton Meadows Neighborhood Association. In fact, we own Mr. Morton's original home. I am a retired construction worker and come here today as a proponent for the Blue Stone Saddle Creek project. I have looked at some of Blue Stone's other projects, Little Italy, Park Avenue, 51st and Leavenworth, and downtown. All blend with the character and architecture of the areas. These projects have not only added tremendous value to the neighborhoods, but the whole city of Omaha. We all know 42nd Street cannot handle the traffic much longer for the Nebraska Medical Center and other area businesses. The redevelopment of the Saddle Creek area is vital to the continued growth of our, that our area is experiencing. Blue Stone has a history of thoughtful, constructive redevelopment projects. Their investment and added value to our neighborhood is a win-win situation for all of us. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Are there any other proponents for agenda items six and nine? Are there any opponents? If you plan to speak, please come down, and when you're at the podium, please give your name and address.
So I can kick this off. My name's Patrick Falke. I live at 4521 Pine Street. I am co-president with my wife, Megan, for the Morton Meadows Neighborhood Association. So if there was a spectrum for proponent-opponent, we're probably close to the middle, but we're leaning a little bit towards opposing. The reason being is we have some concerns. We've submitted a letter of those. We agree with the, I'll just kind of go through some of these and discuss. We've got a lot of feedback from our neighborhood. We do agree that it was a well-attended meeting, that Blue Stone Development came and spoke with our neighbors, but we believe that the majority of that attendance was due to several concerns that our neighbors have around this development. So I'll just kind of go through some of these and then open it up for any questions you have on, maybe on clarification of these items. While we do understand, part of my role as the president or one of the leaders for the Neighborhood Association is I also attend meetings for the Midtown Neighborhood Alliance. So I would agree that Blue Stone has established themselves as one of the better developers, or I guess more engaged developers throughout these types of processes. But that being said, we still have a few items that we'd like to discuss. One is, again, the consideration for dedicated parking in the townhomes of Pacific Street. So when, I believe earlier when they were discussing the number of units, when it came to the number of parking spots, that does not include the rowhomes. And also, most of the units in the rowhouses and in the major building are multi-bedroom units that we think will attract people that are cohabitating that space and more than likely have one, more than one vehicle. So as the ratio gets closer to one vehicle per unit, we believe that'll be exceeded, exacerbating the issue with the traffic and parking. We also feel like the renderings are a good starting point for those rowhouses along Pacific Street, but we feel like there could be a few things with feedback from the neighborhood to make those, I guess, that match the look and feel of the homes on the opposite side of Pacific Street a little better and the surrounding area. So we feel like there's a little bit of work left to be done, possibly with some feedback given to the developers from neighbors directly on how that might occur. We also feel that, again, this is kind of in line with the traffic and, well, the parking, but the traffic with that single easement, we agree that it would be a significant problem. I know, Mr. Pitt, you had a question about that earlier, and Ms. Carnes. We feel like during high-traffic areas, obviously, this is anecdotal, so we didn't do our own study as a neighborhood, but most people know that thoroughfare of Saddle Creek gets pretty widely used during rush hour times, and trying to, even if there's a designated lane for left turns heading south out of the complex, that's still going to create major traffic problems and possible, we think, an increase in possible accidents coming in and out of that complex. We also, the final thing was, we weren't given a clear answer as to whether or not, during that meeting, whether pets would be allowed into the complex long-term, but we felt like one of the contingencies we'd like to have possibly is if pets are allowed in the future, that maybe additional green space or the existing green space would be designated for use of pets. That's pretty much everything we outlined in the letter. I know there's other neighbors who may want to speak in opposition to the project, but I thought I'd leave it open for any questions any members of the board may have.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other opponents?
Hello, my name is Tom Richter. I work at, or I live at 4388 Mason Street, which was in the Morton Meadows Neighborhood. And I just wanted to clarify a couple of things that caused me to have opposition to this project. I've worked for about 26 years for the federal government and an agency that is involved in planning, so I am particularly concerned about community relations or getting along with the neighbors. I agree that Blue Stone has a good track record. They came before us two years ago, first introducing the fact that they'd purchased the property and that they intended to develop it. At that time, at least some of us, including me, got the idea that there would be some engagement between Blue Stone and the community as they developed their plans. In fact, the last word we heard two years ago was, "We're going to work together to make this a development that we'll all be proud of." Well, two years went by, we heard nothing until the last meeting that was referred to, the one that had about 100 members. The point of perspective is usually we get about 15, we're lucky to get about 15, 20 members, so, and the general tone of that meeting was pretty negative, or at least skeptical. Maybe not negative, but certainly skeptical. And at that time, there are many concerns raised, and the tone of the developer was pretty much pushback. It really wasn't conciliatory at all. And I guess my opposition is just respectfully asking if there's any legal way to send this back to encourage Blue Stone to at least have a discussion with the neighbors, with their concerns. We're not suggesting they're going to agree with everything, just like has been spoken before, that this body here doesn't always, they're interested in hearing everybody's points of view, but they're not always going to agree. And so my concern is, to at least slow this down a little bit, to at least have Blue Stone get together with the Neighborhood Association, I really approve and salute the association board of directors. They've done a really good job in stating our concerns. And, Mr. Pitt, I use Pacific a lot to try to turn left on the Saddle Creek, and I can tell you, it's pretty interesting, even not during rush hour periods, and I do have that concern. And, Ms. Carnes, I kind of think it is human nature that if you've got a, you're living in the townhome, you're going to park as close as you can. And keep in mind, this is an older neighborhood where parking's just on one side of the street, so that was also a concern that came up from a nearby residence. One other thing hasn't been mentioned is that that little corner property that's not part of this development is presently a daycare center, and I just think it'd be a real shame if, because of this development or circumstances in the future, that that was sort of pushed into an untenable position, because I think a neighborhood with a lot of young families, we have starter homes for the most part, young families that are just starting out. I think it'd be a real shame if that daycare center sort of gets pushed out of business, because it is going to be kind of isolated in that little corner. And then finally, the other reason I'm standing before you is that the city's placed about a third of our neighborhood into community redevelopment areas, including my property. And I realize it's not a question today, but I am concerned if approval of this development, is this the first step towards the city wanting to sort of retransform our neighborhood? I'm not stupid. I know that the Med Center is putting a really great strain on housing. People want to live close to the Med Center that are working there, but I do feel a little bit like the sword of Damocles hanging over me with the fact that my property and others in our neighborhood are part of that community redevelopment area. So again, I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I just really respect what you guys do. I know you've got almost impossible job at times to please everybody, so I do appreciate it.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you. Any other opponents?
Hi, Nino Greco, 4673 Pacific Street. I've lived there for 35 years. I was at the aforementioned meeting. Yeah, 98% opposed to what they are proposing in the current state. I'm thinking that the rowhouses along Pacific Street are just too big compared to everything else around them. Three stories tall, one and a half stories the biggest house across the street, if that. Ms. Carnes, thank you for bringing up the parking on Pacific Street issue, because, again, I'm going to park right in front of my house and take the shortest distance in. That's what I do now, where I live. I have a signed petition from the people that live closest to the development, along Pacific and along 48th, and within a nice sightline of that. The ones that would answer their doors and sign it were, "Thank you. Oh, can we do anything to stop this?" One person said, "I'm not signing that, there's nothing you can do." Well, I'm trying. Better to try and fail than to not try at all. I don't know who I should hand my petition to. And I thought I had another point, but the other speakers have brought up a lot of fine points I didn't even think of. As far as the traffic study, I believe there's a flaw in it. Did they study Pacific Street? I see there now, and Pacific Street is a shortcut between 42nd and Saddle Creek for people that don't want to use 11th, Leavenworth, or Center, and they zip by my house going pretty darn fast, and I yell at people all the time, "Slow down, there's kids." And it's only going to get worse with more people taking that shortcut to get to their nice new apartment on Pacific and Saddle Creek. Well, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Nino.
Any other opponents?
Yes, hi, my name's Tara Matthews. I live on 4815 Pacific Street, kind of right in this area here. This would be the house actually here. We really are interested in the development piece here. We think Blue Stone is doing a great job, you know, with these projects. However, we have pretty considerable concern here. We utilize the off-street parking currently. The parking is a major concern. Two houses on this block here on Pacific, mine being one, has no driveway, so we just kind of wonder what the city's plan might be for someone in our case with no driveway who is currently utilizing that street for parking. So that would just be our biggest concern there, the parking. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all. Thank you for your time.
Are there any other opponents? Okay, for agenda items six and nine, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring Larry back up for rebuttal.
Thank you. Mr. Chair members of the Board, Larry Jobin, 11440 Western Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. Trying to address some of the concerns here. As far as the community relations, we kind of put together kind of a complete communication update of what we've done or what Blue Stone has done here, and I'll make this part of the record, but, you know, there was discussions with Patrick Falke, of course, about the upcoming neighborhood meeting that was held October 24th. In addition to the neighborhood meeting, we thought it would be wise to have maybe a smaller group of the people who were directly adjacent to the proposed development. So Christian sent out 25 letters to neighbors who either abut the property or face the property along Pacific Street, and invited them to a small group meeting to talk about the design and what the proposed buildings and elevations were going to look like, and how many units were going to be called for, and only three people contacted Christian with respect to that small group meeting. He met with all three of them. Since that time, they have actually put out this project or proposed project on their website, and I think as early as this week, Christians sent out or had an invite on his website to contact him directly with any concerns regarding the proposed project, whatever those concerns might be. So I have a whole list of communications and letters and things that Christian has done in order to inform the people that are most directly affected by this development. I think you find with Blue Stone, they go overboard, if you were here, some of you are here, I know, with the Mayberry project, 51st and Mayberry. are here, I know, with the Mayberry Project, Fifty-first and Mayberry, and also spaces down on Park Ave. I think they go over and above the call of duty when it comes to notifying people who are impacted or affected by their developments, and I think they're very caring, and they pay a lot of attention to people who directly abut their property. So I'll make this part of the record if it's okay. As far as, I think it's called Donna's Little Darling, if you want to put this up. She was at the daycare here on the corner. She was actually at the neighborhood meeting, and she expressed concerns, but mainly, I think her concerns were during construction, excuse me, keeping dust down, noise, concerns, those kinds of things. We acknowledged that we'd be mindful of the operating business of a daycare being so close in proximity to really the construction site. I'm not sure that she was so worried about, once it's up and operating, it was more about construction. Christian, on his website, always puts up, you know, what's going on, what's happening next, and keeps people apprised of that. So I think that, and we had a construction manager that was actually in attendance also from the contractor, and said that they would do whatever they needed to do to lessen the impacts to the daycare during construction. I mean, it's sort of an evil of progress, I mean, it just is the way it is, but I think they will go out of their way to try to make sure that they are, don't impact her, at least in the least way that they can during construction. As far as the redevelopment area, the redevelopment area, of course, you know, with the planning department, I mean, that provides for economic incentives, I think that's a good thing. You know, we always talk about the blight and substandard definition being, we wish we could all change it, it is what it is, it's in the Constitution that way. Blight and substandard doesn't really mean necessarily blight and substandard in some respects, but at least with the area that's included within the redevelopment area, I mean, it does from a statutory perspective, but sometimes you have to include areas that aren't typically meeting that requirement with respect to the application to a particular project that you're trying to get off the, out of the ground. But in any event, so as far as the designation of these areas, this happens all over the city of Omaha, and all it really does, or all it really means, is it provides for economic incentives for people to develop. As far as Mr. Greco, interestingly, we all, the development team stayed around after that neighborhood meeting with over a hundred and twenty-some people that were there. I did not get the impression, I don't think the development team got the impression that ninety-nine percent of these people were opposed to it. I had many, many people come up and said to me, and I know that other people on the development team also said, that this is a great project, we like what you do, we've seen what you've done around the city of Omaha, we appreciate the information you've provided at this meeting, we like the look of it, we like the fact that you're accessing it out onto Saddle Creek and out through the neighborhood, and there are a lot of positive things from the neighbors, so I'm not sure that I would ever go even close to ninety percent of the people were somehow opposed. I think I do have a more direct elevation of the townhomes along Pacific, and you'll notice they are very residential in character, both with material choices and the front doors and the porches and the planners in front, and they really do look more like a townhome-style residential dwelling and not two twelve-plexes. As far as the off-street parking, and the reason why they want everyone to come and park onsite in the back and then walk to the front is that, and they think that most of their tenants will park off the street and in the back of the buildings is because they'll be well-lit, they'll be safe, the sidewalk will be well-lit, it'll be safe, and of course, the way Blue Stone manages their property, they want to make sure that their tenants are always safe and provide a safe atmosphere coming to and from their parking areas. So they actually wanted all their parking to be interior because they thought that would be a good thing, and that their tenants would actually like that better as opposed to being out on the street. Not that they can't be out on the street, because I don't think there's restricted parking on Pacific Street, but that's really up to the city, that's what they decided to do there.
Hey Larry, excuse me, is that, did you say that's the view from Pacific Street?
Yeah, that's the townhomes.
So they do have entrances?
All the entrances are on Pacific Street.
Oh, they are?
All the parking is interior, so if you have the site here, all of the parking is onsite, so the hundred and seventy spaces that we talked about are all onsite, and then they walk through that sidewalk between the two buildings to get to the front door of these particular units. But again, they're very residential in character as far as the porches, the front doors, and in each building, of course, there are six efficiencies and six two-bedrooms in each one of the buildings, so twelve units in each one of these.
So if you have access on Pacific Street, won't people just park on Pacific and just go right through those doors?
We don't. In talking with Deborah and Christian, they believe that most of the people will want to park where it's safe and where it's protected and internal to the site, and then will walk through the well-lit sidewalk into their particular premises. That doesn't mean they can't park there, only because it's, there's no parking at this time. That doesn't mean that the city couldn't come in and restrict parking, but right now there is no restriction, so the public generally can park there, but they believe that their tenants will feel more safe and secure parking internal to the site and walking through the two buildings and accessing the front door along Pacific Street.
I think that's really going to be a function of, is there going to be available parking right behind those townhome units, because if they have to park on the north side, because they can't find adequate parking, they're going to start parking on Pacific Street.
Those same tenants, just as these tenants, can also park internal to the building as well if they choose to rent an internal parking space inside the main building. So they have parking choices.
Where are the entrances for the five-story apartments going to be at? Do you have those?
I believe the main entrance is off the Saddle Creek entrance, right here, so this is Saddle Creek out front.
View from Saddle Creek?
Yeah, this is a view from Saddle Creek, and then I believe this is the main entrance, and this is where that raised patio area was, and the amenity area was on the building.
So Larry, on the backside of the townhome, if you will, what we see there on that north elevation, those are just full-height windows, not patio doors or other access into the unit. They just, they have to all run around to the south side.
This one here?
Well, yeah, that's.
Or were you, or were you looking, you mean along to Civic Street?
No, when you're in the back of those units, looking south.
Well, we don't have any.
Yeah, there.
We don't have any direct elevation of the backside of the units. This is as close as we have. I don't know, Todd's here, he's the architect, maybe you can explain a little bit more about how the back of those units look.
Yeah, we have a, we have a north elevation on our, in our back end.
I thought maybe a site plan would help out a little bit. So these are the buildings along, don't need to say my name.
Yep, and an address, please.
Todd Moller, three-twenty-two South Fiftieth Avenue, work with Valley Pointe and McQuaid Architecture. So these are the row houses along Pacific that we're talking about, the apartment building. So the main entrance to the apartment building for pedestrians is here, it's also within the parking garage if you so choose to go either entrance or one of the person doors into that location to access the stairs or the elevator to get up onto your floor. The reason that these buildings face Pacific Street is, one, is that's part of the urban design guidelines, is these buildings, working with JED and the city, is these buildings need to face the street, so we're not putting the back of these buildings to the public right away, so that's why that's happening. But we did go through great effort to make the front of that building read, you know, and blend in with the neighborhood. Design is always subjective, but we felt, we feel like we did a lot of work with the scale and so forth of the adjacent houses. Houses on the other side of Pacific Street, we did cross-sections through both directions of the whole entire site, but also cross-sections through Pacific Street, and what you'll notice in that cross-section is the overall height of the houses are much more in line, because on the south side of Pacific Street, the front yards go up, so these are much more close than they may appear. Did I answer the questions that I originally came up here for?
What about, I understand the entrances being of the townhomes I'm talking about now, being on Pacific Street.
Yep.
What about entrances on the parking side, the interior of the site being there also for townhomes?
Into the townhomes?
Yeah, having dual entrances.
So that is something that we had reviewed at some point, the building, the rooms on the first floor are the convertible units, and so it's just putting a, you know, is a door that kind of enters into a bedroom, is that, you know, the right design or the right, you know, will that make a functional unit was a challenge? And like Larry said, the way we will illuminate the entire site, the thought is that you would go through a breezeway through those buildings onto a nice residential street and then into your unit. I am someone who has a midtown house with my parking, detached parking garage, it's in the backside of my house. I go back there, I do a very similar move where I walk around and then go into the front door of my house, and it's probably a similar dimension to this.
What's a person do when they've got a carload of groceries, living in that townhome? Were they, I mean, they're going to park in the front?
I think that that's.
Rather than carry everything around?
They could if there was a stall there, or they could park in any of these and do that same movement, just right through there and into the front door of their unit.
So, and that parking on the north side is not limited to the townhomes, right? I mean, anybody from the apartment complex can park there?
I.
So to Greg's point, you could be parking on the northeast corner of the development with a car full of groceries, if that's the only available spot, right?
It'd be up to Blue Stone if they wanted to, you know, control their parking in a certain way, that certain parking stalls were allotted to certain units or so forth, but that would be a property management decision, I think.
I mean, the only thing I would say about that is, you know, there's parking all the way around this building, of course, you have the one entry point here, you know, and of course here, unless you're parking internal to the building, so I mean, that issue exists regardless of where you are on the site as far as parking, you still have to walk into a door. I mean, people will, I think, get used to doing that.
So let me just be clear, there's no entrance to the larger building on the east side?
Internal to the parking structure, there is.
But if you park on the east side on the exterior, not the interior, then you, again, would walk around the front?
Yeah, you could go through the building into one of the stair towers or through here into the elevator and then up.
So you can enter on the east side?
Correct.
Yes, yes, through the parking area, yes. Sorry if I wasn't clear about that. I think the last thing with respect to rebuttal, I did want to ask Matt Cruz to come up, he's the traffic engineer that did the traffic study, and I'll let him talk about what he actually analyzed and what his findings were with respect to the safety and the traffic counts of having this one entrance from the site onto Saddle Creek. So I'll turn it over to Matt, and then again, we'll open it up for questions.
Matthew Cruz, one-four-seven-ten West Dodge Road, Almont, Nebraska, six-eight-one-five-four. So as was mentioned, the traffic study was done. The traffic study is based on the number of units, I know parking's been mentioned, but it's based on the number of units, so taking into consideration the hundred and fifty-eight total units, we estimated using standard trip generation from IT manual, roughly eighty-five trips in the AM peak hour and then a hundred and ten in the PM peak hour. In the AM peak hour, roughly eighty percent of those are leaving the site, twenty percent are coming back to the site, and then in the, in the PM peak hour, it's roughly seventy percent are coming back to the site, thirty are leaving the site. We did analyze Saddle Creek and Pacific and the intersection that Larry's mentioned. Early on, that intersection, the site drive here, was being analyzed as one lane in, one lane out, based on what preliminary findings, we suggested that it add the second outbound lane for the left-turn vehicles. We do analysis on present year, so twenty-seventeen, twenty-twenty, and twenty-forty, we get projections from MAPPA for Saddle Creek Road and increase the volumes for just growth in the area. And as Larry said, the traffic study showed that preliminarily, the delay at Pacific will increase roughly two seconds per vehicle in the twenty-forty based on background to a full build-out of this facility. The Saddle Creek, we counted in November of this year, currently, the traffic is in the AM peak hour, roughly sixty-six percent's going northbound, and then thirty-four percent is going southbound. In the PM peak, that's reversed, it kind of shifts to roughly sixty-two southbound, thirty-eight going northbound. So in the AM peak hour, the majority of those vehicles leaving, we estimate will be turning right and heading north on Saddle Creek, and then in the, in the PM peak hour, they'll be coming back to the facility, or to the site and turning left into the, into the site. This has been presented to, our traffic study has presented to the city of Omaha for their review. We have not received comments yet, but as we receive those comments, we'll work through those with the city, and if there's any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I would add one more thing with respect to traffic. You know, currently, it's GC zoning, and currently, it's a warehouse and distribution, obviously it's vacant now, but there could be substantially more traffic coming in and out of this particular site with warehousing and distribution with the existing zoning and the existing structure there than there will be with respect to the number of units that are called for on this development. So again, I think this is a down zoning from GC and GI to the R eight, so I think you actually are lessening the potential impacts traffic-wise from what could possibly or potentially go into this site with the current zoning that's there today.
What's that building that's there now?
What's that?
What is the current building that's there? Is that an auction warehouse?
It's a warehouse distribution center. I have a, here's a picture of it. That's what's currently there today.
I bet, it's not a very functional building, the warehouse portion is lower ceilings, more like, really, assembly and stuff like that, it's not a traditional warehouse.
Yeah.
And it's two levels, too, which makes it hard for ADA and stuff like that.
But with the GC zoning, obviously, you could demolish that building as a matter of right and pull a building permit as a matter of right, and you could have, you know, something that is much more intensive as far as a use and as far as a traffic impact on this particular site.
Is that it, Larry?
That's it, that's all we have. Thank you.
If there's no other questions for Items Six and Nine, I'm going to move on to the Agenda Item Number Five to hear from Bridget Hadley, representing the city of Omaha.
Good afternoon, Bridget Hadley, City of Planning. I'll just simply kind of echo what Larry Jovan said about the CRA. I know you guys are aware what the CRA does, it is an incentive for economic development and redevelopment in the area, and those areas are only developed as the development community sees opportunities that make economic sense and then are brought to the city for evaluation. So this particular TIP project was brought to us, the staff in the planning department has reviewed the TIP application, the TIP committee approved the TIP application last month for a TIP request, a TIP loan request of two-point-six-two-eight million dollars. These were for at least three-point-seven, low over three-point-seven million in TIP-eligible costs such as land acquisition, a lot of infrastructure, site preparation, architectural engineering-type work, and all of those were public, or excuse me, TIP-eligible costs. The total investment of the project is over twenty-two million, and it does comply with the community development law, so we do ask for your approval.
Thank you, Bridget. Are there any other proponents concerning Agenda Item Number Five?
Yes, Mr. Chair Members of the Board, Larry Jovan, one hundred and fourteen forty, Western Road, just to concur with what Bridget had to say, and we're here for any questions that you have on that particular item.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents? Are there any opponents to Agenda Item Number Five? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Are there any questions in the board or comments?
I've got, I've got one on the valuation here on the TIP. It appears that the total project's going to cost roughly about twenty-two million dollars, but the final valuation's only going to be roughly about fourteen million dollars that appears here. Why would Why would there be such a variance between the assessed value and the total construction cost?
Mike, who are you addressing here?
To Bridget.
You want Bridget to come?
Yeah.
I'll lead off, I'm sure Larry will, he'll wanna say something, but we ask all of our TIP applicants to give, give us what they think the final value of the TIP project is gonna be. Most of our applicants are, um, well-versed, um, in the development community and the construction costs as well as what the final value is going to be. Many of them will check with the assessor's office to, um, kinda gauge what that, the final value of that project will be. Um, oftentimes the costs are so much higher than what the final value is going to be, so that can account for the variance, but I don't know if Larry wants to say more.
Do, do we anticipate that the appraised value will be in excess of the, uh, total construction cost?
I don't know if there's an appraisal yet.
Uh, I think the way to answer that is that you have your construction costs, those are acquisition, demolition, uh, site preparation costs. Uh, of course, then you have the actual construction costs, you know, of, of going vertical on the buildings. I think the difference is, is when you're looking at, uh, the projected valuation, well, a lot of times that we look at apartments when we're doing these redevelopment projects, we look at them on a per-door basis, but in the end, it's really based on the income approaches, the way the assessors appraise these, um, income-producing properties such as apartments. So I think what we're looking at, and, and usually I think we find that the valuation is about 85 to 90 to 95, to paint on, some can go as, as far as a hundred thousand dollars a door. I think if you did the math here, um, you could divide the 158 units and come up with what you think the valuation is on a per-door basis. That's the way we do it a lot, but it really is the income approach and remember the average rental rate is $1,100 a month. So, you know, we believe that the projected valuation will be the 13,924,000 even though the construction costs will be substantially higher than that.
So will the amount of the, the value, the valuation, the assessed valuation then cover the TIP financing?
It will, of course, yes. I mean, that, you don't do yourself any favors if you overstate the amount of the TIP. If the project won't support it from a projected valuation, uh, perspective, you know, you don't do yourself any favors. So you really try to be very good with your pencil as determining what you think the projected value will be. You know, I think we just talked about the, the TIP eligible expenses. For example, we're $3,803,868. We're only requesting TIP in the amount of $2,628,000. So our TIP request is less than the, the TIP eligible expenses. Why? Because we don't think the projected value will support the 3.8. So you gotta be very careful because typically you go out and collateralize these TIP notes and the last thing you wanna do is have a, a TIP note that is at a bank, uh, with a bank loan that's substantially higher than what the TIP will generate to pay it back. So.
I don't think generally a bank would finance that type of
Yeah, they, well, they typically don't. Uh, depends on, I guess, the guarantor, right?
All right. That seemed like such a wide variance, I was just curious.
Yeah, no, I think that's the, the answer. Al, also I would say on, on multifamily housing, a lot of times you won't request the full amount of the TIP even though you think the project might support it. And the reason why is, is if your tax amount is too high, because you can't protest your taxes below a certain amount based on the redevelopment agreement, what you don't wanna do is blow your market rate rents out of the water because you've set your tax rate or, or valuation plus your, times your levy too high, and so you gotta pass that on to your tenant. And so what you've done is you've blown your market rate rents out of the water and then now you can't lease the, the property. So most of the time you sort of make an adjustment, uh, based upon your experience and feel for what the project really will support and repay.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, I think, uh, what we're gonna do, how we'll proceed is we'll take a vote on agenda item number six, then nine, and then five. We'll hear from the city planning department. Sherry Rockwell.
Uh, before we get started on that, I'd like to mention a few things. Um, you know, I, I commend Christian and his team. We've been meeting with them for quite a long time now regarding the project. Foremost in our minds is compliance with all applicable regulations, but I can tell you that when we had those meetings, uh, at least as important as that was consideration for the neighborhood in our minds regarding parking. Uh, the parking meets the infill redevelopment guidelines. The site is close to public transit. There's bike, bike parking that's going to be provided. Um, there are amenities in the area such as the grocery store across the way. We can call up Ryan if you have any additional questions regarding traffic. Uh, the CRA area, the, the responsibility of the city with regard to that is to react for, to requests for redevelopment plans. The city is not actively going out to, you know, initiate redevelopment in those areas. With that, um, we would recommend approval of the rezoning to include the MCC overlay district, approval of the rezoning from R4, 35, GC and GI to R8, subject to approval of an acceptable final PUR plan, approval of the preliminary plat subject to the five conditions listed, and approval of the final plat subject to the conditions of preliminary plat approval and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement if necessary prior to forwarding the request to city council.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'd like to say I'm very familiar with this building and over the last five, 10 years, it's, there's been a lot of vacancies, a lot of temporary tenants in there. And it's, there's cases where you have what's a commercial building and there's some, it's functional obsolescence where this building has a, there's, there's a church there for a long time that, that used part of the building and then an office supply company would use part of it for warehouse, but it's two levels, it's, it's not really accessible for ADA uses. Um, the warehouse is, is really short ceilings and, and so given all the growth of this community in the, in that neighborhood, I think it's a really good reuse and repurpose of that lot to, to make multifamily. So I applaud the developers for that. Um, with that, um, I would, uh, vote for the approval of the, um, rezoning from R4, 35, GC and GI to R8, subject to the approval of the acceptable final PUR plan, approval of the preliminary plat, subject to the five conditions, and then approval of the final plat, subject to the conditions of the preliminary plat approval and, uh, was it?
You forgot the
Oh, also the approval of the MCC, uh, major commercial corridor overlay district, and then approval of the final plat, subject to the conditions of the preliminary plat, approval and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement if necessary prior to forwarding the request to the city council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Flott, will you record the vote?
Kate?
Yes.
Lauren?
Uh, I just wanted to make a statement before I voted. Um, it's a tough one for me. I know you do great work and, um, and really revitalize neighborhoods and I appreciate all of that. I do think the parking is a little bit of an issue and I would love to see you guys meet with the neighborhood and work on some of that before this goes to city council. While I understand that it is on-street city parking and anybody can park there, I would hate to see the neighborhood lose their ability to park there as well. And so I think some of that can be worked out and I would like to see efforts be made to do that before it heads to city council, but, um, my vote is yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved.
Okay, we'll move on to agenda item nine. If there's no further questions, we'll hear from Ms. Rockwell with the city recommendations.
The planning department recommends approval of the PUR planned unit redevelopment overlay district, subject to the two conditions listed, prior to forwarding the request to city council.
I'll make the motion to approve the PUR planned unit redevelopment overlay district, subject to the two conditions prior to submittal to the city council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Rockwell, will you, Ms. Flott, will you record the vote, please?
Lauren? Yes. Megan?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And we'll now take up agenda item number five. Ms. Rockwell?
The planning department recommends approval.
I'm with approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Flott, will you record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved.
Okay, I'm gonna ask the board, do you, does anybody wanna take a break or do you wanna continue?
No way, let's get things done.
Good.
Keep going, all right. Uh, the next, uh, item is, uh, agenda item number 12. It was removed from the, uh, consent agenda. It is, uh, case C10-17-261. Applicant Trent Overu, request rezoning from GC to CC along with approval of a MCC major commercial corridor overlay district. Location 5000 and 5020 L Street. Will the applicant please come forward? The applicant, are, are you the applicant or representing the applicant?
Representing, uh, Travis Overhu, 1 through 312 South 28th Street. Um, I think just the main concern and stuff is, uh, Selvin Company just wants to make, they own the property, just wanna make sure that the, uh, rezoning is contingent on the sale of the property and stuff. So I mean, he's gonna come forward to submit.
Okay.
Greg, you want an answer?
Go ahead.
We, you can't condition the zoning on the sale of property.
I was just
Although the applicant, I'm not sure the timing of that transaction, but it doesn't have to go forward to city council if the transaction falls through, I guess.
Yeah.
And let me check with Eric. Eric, was it a condition of the use permit? Okay, so I'll retract that. It's a condition of the approval of the conditional use permit, so we would see it going forward to city council.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Are there any questions? If not, Sherry is not here.
I'll move for approval.
Well, just a second, we gotta hear from
Oh, Sherry stepped out, so I'll handle all this difficult recommendation. The planning department recommends approval.
I'll move for approval, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Flott, will you record the vote?
Megan?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Lauren? Yes.
Yes.
Approved.
Okay, we'll move on to our final agenda item. It is, uh, number 13. Case C10-17-272. Applicant Omaha Fontana Properties LLC. The request rezoning from R7 to R7 and GO along with approval of a MCC major commercial corridor overlay district. Location southeast of 52nd Street and Ames Avenue. May we hear from the applicant?
Uh, good afternoon, my name is Jay Wall and, uh, here on behalf of, uh, the applicant, which is the Omaha Home for Boys. Um, I'm with the Bolt Company. We're located at 1110 Old World Third Street in Milwaukee, Wisconsin. I'm here with my associate Alex Brewer, also Tom Hysick with, uh, Leo A. Daly and Jeff Moran with the Omaha Home for Boys. What we're trying to, uh, what we're proposing here is subdividing approximately a two-acre lot, uh, from the overall Omaha Home for Boys campus, which is a total of about 60 acres, approximately 60 acres. Our parcel would be along Ames Street with the entrance aligning with 50th Avenue to the, uh, to the north. Um, the reason we are proposing this rezoning, this subdivision and this rezoning is because we are proposing to develop a single-story, uh, 13,000, roughly 13,000 square foot, uh, primary care clinic on this site, which is currently not, uh, an acceptable use on the current zoning, the current R7 zoning. So we would be subdividing this small parcel, rezoning it to GO, um, and then the rest of the, uh, remaining campus would remain R7 zoning for the Omaha Home for Boys. What we'd be doing on this proposed, with this proposed project is, as I mentioned, we would be reusing the, uh, the existing entrance that aligns with 50th Street for access to this site. Uh, we would be, uh, placing the building on what is the current parking lot in that area and then expanding the parking, uh, from currently 85 spaces to 116 spaces, which would account for, uh, the 66 spaces required for the clinic and then also the remaining 40 spaces because currently that parking lot supports parking for the, uh, for the ball field directly to the, to the south. I know it's been a long afternoon, I'll try to keep the comments
No, keep going as long as you wanna go.
Okay, but
We're here till midnight if you want.
Easy.
You are. Not as long as you want.
But that's, that's, uh, that's our proposal, so that's
Thank you.
Thank you for doing business in Omaha. We appreciate it. Uh, will your company own and operate the facility?
Correct. We will, we will own and lease the, and lease the, lease the building.
Is this your first project in Omaha?
No, we actually have recently opened up two similar clinics, one in La Vista, uh, one at, at 86th and Giles, um, one at 168th and Giles, and then we currently have one under construction in Elkhorn at approximately, at, uh, excuse me, 203rd and, and Sage Park.
Under what name?
Um, we've got a couple, a number of LLCs that own the, own the individual properties.
So they're, they're just regular, they're, they're primary care, they're not like, uh, emerger care type clinics, they're
No, they are primary care, primary care clinics. One clinic, the, uh, the one at 168th and Giles also has an urgent care function.
Yeah, and they're, they're independent, they're not part of a, a local hospital group or anything like that?
No, they're, Nebraska Medicine is our tenant.
Okay.
For all, all three or four clinics should this, should this one
We've heard of them.
Any other questions? Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. If there's any questions or comments, we'll get the city's recommendation. Ms. Rockwell.
This is a positive project for the area. The proposed zoning changes in accordance with the master plan and the department recommends approval.
Is there a motion to approve the MCC overlay district and rezoning from R7 to R7 and GO, subject to some, um, acceptable replat prior to forwarding it to the council?
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Flott, will you record the vote?
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Kate? Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you very much.
You bet.
All done.
Thanks, Jack. Pleasure sticking around.
Too important to leave by.
Come back next month.
The board's still got the matter of, uh, last month's minutes?
Hey Greg?
I move approval of the minutes from, oops, I'm sorry.
Second. Can I say something?
Oh, sure, go ahead.
Now that there's nobody else in the room, it's still a public meeting, Chris, that you can get note, minutes. I, um, I'm gonna do something that I said I wasn't gonna do, but I just want to publicly state my appreciation for Sherry Rockwell's dedication to our planning department over the last 26 or 27 years. And in particular, I want to state my personal appreciation for all the work that Sherry has done for me, because I don't sit in this chair without Sherry Rockwell. And I just wanna tell you, thank you, Sherry.
Speech, speech.
All right, now I'll move them, now I'll move approval for the minutes.
Second, Mike.
I'm sorry.
Does anybody else have a comment?
I wanna say
We're gonna make Sherry sit.
Yeah, we're gonna sit here.
Oh, this is great.
I wanna say thank you for being patient with new board members who have a learning curve and you were very, very, uh, good to me and, and very patient with me and spent a lot of time explaining things to me and I really appreciate that and you will definitely be missed, so. Thank you for all of your service to the city of Omaha and all of the developments that you've worked on that have really changed the city.
That's been a lot.
Well, I, I just also like to, obviously I haven't been here as long as, as some of you, but, um, the, what I appreciate is just first of all, the depth of knowledge that, that Sherry and, and actually the whole staff has in all the minutia of our codes and all those other things and, and how she interfaces with the clients when they come in and lays out what the situation really is so that, uh, We would be placing the building on what is the current parking lot in that area, and then expanding the parking from currently eighty-five spaces to a hundred and sixteen spaces, which would account for the sixty-six spaces required for the clinic, and then also the remaining forty spaces, because currently that parking lot supports parking for the, for the ball field directly to the, to the south. I know it's been a long afternoon, I'll try to keep the comments free.
Keep going as long as you wanna go.
Okay, but.
We're here till midnight, if you want.
Easy. Easy.
Not as long as you want.
But that's, that's, that's our proposal, so that's what we're trying to do.
I think you're doing business in Omaha. We appreciate it. Will your company own and operate the facility?
Correct. We will, we will own and lease the, and lease the, lease the building.
Is this your first project in Omaha?
No, we actually have recently opened up two similar clinics, one in La Vista, one at Eighty-Sixth and Giles, one at a hundred and Sixty-Eighth and Giles, and then we currently have one under construction in Elkhorn at approximately, at, excuse me, Two Hundred Third and St. Park.
Under what name?
We've got a couple, a number of LLCs that own the, own the individual properties.
So they're, they're primary care, they're not like emerger care type clinics, they're...
No, they are primary care, primary care clinics. One clinic, the, the one at a hundred and Sixty-Eighth and Giles, also has an urgent care function.
And they're, they're independent, they're not part of a local hospital group or anything like that?
No, they're, Nebraska Medicine is our tenant.
Okay.
For all, all three or four clinics, should this, should this one go through.
We've heard of them.
Any other questions? Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. If there's any questions or comments, we'll get the city's recommendation. Ms. Rockwell.
This is a positive project for the area. The proposed zoning changes in accordance with the master plan, and the department recommends approval.
We have a motion to approve the MCC overlay district, the rezoning from R seven to R seven and GO, subject to some acceptable replat prior to forwarding the request to the council.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Flott?
Megan?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Lauren? Yes. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved.
And we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Flott, will you record the vote?
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore? Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Lauren? Yes. Megan?
No, I'm gonna stay.
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved.
And we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Flott, will you record the vote?
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore? Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Lauren? Yes. Megan?
No, I'm gonna stay.
Yes. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Flott?
Megan?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Lauren? Yes. Megan?
No, I'm gonna stay.
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved.